There are a lot of issues that are utmost important to me.
I too share Lauren's enthusiasm. There are concerns that I am interested in addressing this evening with hopes that at the end of this forum, we will be able to discern the best candidate to represent our district as a member of the Pinellas County Commission. We will begin the evening by giving each candidate three minutes to introduce themselves.
Introductions will begin with Mrs. Renee Flowers, followed by Mr. Frank Peterman.
Good afternoon or good evening, everybody, and thank you so very much for having us here on this evening. Truly, it is a historic occasion, and I'm excited to have two young adults who have made their mark in our community, and I know that great things are on the horizon for you. My name is Renee Flowers, and I'm a candidate for Pinellas County Commission District Seven. And the reason that I'm running is because we have so much more work to do. The Pinellas County Commissioners have rightfully so placed over eighty million dollars as it relates to affordable housing. But I think if we marry those dollars with partnerships from municipal governments and other entities that are looking at building affordable housing, we'll be able to stretch our dollars. That's why individuals like Frank Wells and people like Anthony Jones, who are looking at land investment trusts and what that can do to help purchase land at a lower cost in order to build affordable and make sure that it's affordable for those who want to move in there, like people that represent our moderators on this evening. I'm also very engaged with the environment. As a school board member, we've taken on a number of projects that have allowed us through an organization called Synergy to look at the reduction of our carbon footprint. We've been able to purchase some additional compressed natural gas vehicles and electric vehicles because we want to do our part to save the environment. I stood firmly with Senator Nelson and Congressman Charlie Crist when there was the indication of fracking and offshore drilling, not off of our shores and not off of our beaches. We have so many small businesses. They are the heart and soul of our community. And that's why I myself am a small business owner, because I can hire people from the community who may find it difficult to be hired in corporate America. We need to continue to fund those businesses. That's why I'm excited that I serve on the Pinellas Community Foundation Board, and we were just awarded additional funds from the Pinellas County Commission to make sure that we serve as a navigator, getting those CARES Act dollars into the hands of people who need them. And last, but certainly not least, we need to look out for our future. We want to make sure that our community is ready to embrace those individuals who go off to college and come back home and want to work. I've been endorsed by Ruthless because of my leadership skills and abilities as the president of the Florida League of Cities. I've been endorsed by SEIU FPSU because blue collar working men and women know that I will continue to fight for them to earn at least fifteen dollars an hour or better, and that the working conditions that they're in are better than they deserve. Last, but certainly not least, I want to make sure that you know I've been endorsed by AFL-CIO. Those are, again, our hardworking men and women throughout the community who are on the front lines right now, making sure that you remain safe from COVID-19. Vote Renee Flowers on before August eighteenth.
Thank you, Ms. Flowers. We will now hear from Mr. Peterman.
Thank you very much. I want to thank the Woodson Museum for inviting both of us to this great forum. I'm excited about the future. Thank God for the youth who are helping to moderate this wonderful forum. I also want to pay homage to Terry Lipsy Scott, who's done a wonderful job developing this great institution over the years. Also, just like to say that it's an honor to speak before this group as it relates to African-American history, especially with the unrest that we have now in our community. It's really good to know that I can talk to this group and talk about some issues that we're facing as we're facing right now as I speak and the rest of us viewing this particular segment. I am Frank Peterman Jr., running for the County Commission District Seven. Excited about it. I served in St. Pete City Council years ago. Also, served in the Florida Legislature as a legislator and ran a almost billion-dollar entity, Department Juvenile Justice Department here in the state of Florida. I'm homegrown, Lakewood High School, Perkins Elementary right down the street. You guys are also Bay Point Middle School. I've enjoyed working in this community for years. Three areas that I'm really passionate about, and of course there are more, the three platform areas I have. One is small businesses and that economic development, making sure that they're developed well and supported. I think we can do a matchmaking piece that we can do to make sure that these small businesses are matched with large businesses. And also, the second one would be community budget requests. Should you get a chance to state what you would like in your communities and get those areas funded. Thirdly, affordable housing, it's very important. Got to make sure we have decent places to live and the people who are working in our communities will have a place to reside. I think the next thing I want to talk about very quickly is the social unrest. I think we have to deal with, since this is the Cottage Woodson Museum, the Woodson, I should say, we have to look at social justice as relates to systemic racism in this community and beyond, and also institutionalized racism. So I'm looking forward to continuing this conversation. Been in this community for many years and enjoyed serving as a pastor for eighteen years for the Rock of Jesus Missionary Baptist Church also. So thank you so very much, and I look forward to having this discussion for the vote for Frank Peterman on August eighteenth as County Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Peterman. And again, thank you all for being here. And now it is time to begin our process of asking questions. Pinellas County has long supported arts and culture. As a member of the Pinellas County Commission, what would you do to ensure funding for St. Petersburg's only African-American museum? And what would you do to make certain it is promoted as other tourist attractions within the area? You will have three minutes to answer, starting with Ms. Flowers.
Thank you so very much for that question. As a matter of fact, I've already embedded a request within my platform that would allow funding to support the construction of a new Dr. Carter G. Woodson African-American museum right up the street from where they currently are on the Commerce property. We receive a certain number of dollars through the tourism and business industry. And if you notice, whenever we're having visits throughout the community, arts walks and art culture, the Dr. Carter G. Woodson African-American Museum is one of the places that so many want to visit. I've had the chance to lead tours throughout South St. Petersburg, starting right at the Dr. Carter G. Woodson African-American Museum. And some may remember that the reason that that building is there is because when I served on council, I made sure that that building remained during the Hope Six renovation project of Jordan Park. It has a special place in my heart, and I believe it is the place that has certainly exhibited our history right here in St. Petersburg. Some of it good and some of it bad. We had a gentleman liched right here in South St. Petersburg. But we also have good memories of art and music and culture out of the Manhattan Casino. My parents used to come home and tell me about the dances and the way that they had a chance to just communicate with everyone in the community and socialize around art and culture. The Dr. Carter G. Woodson African-American Museum has also hosted a number of programs, keyboard training programs. They've hosted the Ladies of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated's African History Program. I've had the opportunity to serve and present that program, and it was such a joy to do so. They've had a number of drumming events there that people get a chance to know the culture and the history and how rich we are with our culture and why it's so important that we embrace who we are. Some would tend to say that we're not African-American, we're black. Well, I'm here to tell you I'm proud because I'm from Africa. That is my heritage, and I'm a Black strong woman. And I believe the Dr. Carter G. Woodson African-American Museum exhibits that. But not only is it there for our culture and for our people, partnerships with so many persons from outside of our community, like these scholarships that were just awarded, that came from someone who is of a different complexion than us, but she cares about young people, and so she worked hard. Jane Buecher worked hard to make sure that the paintings that she painted were sold and the money was given back for scholarships. That's what the Dr. Carter G. Woodson African-American History Museum does. It is a social place because art is social.
Thank you, Ms. Flowers. We will now hear from Mr. Peterman.
Well, I think the way I would enhance the funding streams and the support for this wonderful organization would be through some of the state funding mechanisms, some of the preservation money, arts money from that pool. I know a little bit about that, having been a past state legislator, as well as, I would imagine, there would be some national funding in the DC area among congressional members and among certain departments there. I would want to go after those, that type of funding. I've had experience doing that as Secretary of Department of Juvenile Justice, bringing down millions of dollars from DC for my department. And then lastly, of course, as a County Commissioner, I would do everything in my power to make sure we get the proper resources for this particular museum. I've enjoyed this entire area. I grew up on Twenty Second Street. My mother and father, when they first started out, it was the Alsup apartment right down the road from this place. So my early beginnings were there. Also, my father had a chance to work in the civil rights areas and attorneys on the marquee right outside the building when he fought for striking garbage workers many years ago. So having a kinship to this place, wonderful place. And also helped with the Hope Six piece many years ago, the first, first rendition of the Hope Six money. I also worked as a Black on Black crime prevention program, right out of college, right out of Morehouse College, right in the heart of Jordan Park, with a lady by the name Ms. Caffey and some others. I still remember at the age of twenty-three, doing that type of work in Jordan Park. Loved being there, loved the entire area. Father used to have a business, a law business right on that street, Sandler and Peterman White. He had a chance to see the great Jimi Hendrix play right in Manhattan Casino. He couldn't believe the music he was hearing. He saw the great Jimi Hendrix play on Twenty Second Street. So there's a connection, love for the place. And we both have a connection to, of course, the candidate Renee Flowers has a wonderful affinity for the area also. But wanted to say those are the things I would do. Real excited, and this is very important, African-American history extremely important. Cottage Woods has to be a fraternity brother of mine. He was. And thanks so much for the work he did and for this whole nation. And I want to make sure we continue that here in this city and the county at large here in Pinellas County. Thanks a lot.
Thank you both for answering that question. The next question is, you have both served in elected positions. What have you done in those previous positions that qualifies you and sets you apart as the best candidate to serve in this area's next representative for Pinellas County Commission? You have three minutes. Mr. Peterman, you are our first.
Well, there's so many things I could talk about. I could speak of the time that I helped establish a kind of entrepreneurial piece of the guy called the Green Man on St. Pete City Council many, many years ago. Make sure that he had a chance to sell his wares there in certain roads in St. Pete. We did the economic development incubator organization and facility in St. Pete many years ago. That's just the city council level, not to mention the various budgets we passed and the policies we set in place. And then as you look at the state level, I served as state representative. In that time, we passed billions of dollars to help folks in our community and also in other communities across the state of Florida. I created a landmark bill called the Social Status of Black Men and Boys. It's still in operation. It operates out of the Attorney General's office, so we look at everything happening to black men and boys, and it's...
Ms. Flowers, we're going to go ahead and let you have your turn. You have...
...have done that, as well as many other areas. Funding has taken place in so many other areas. We brought money down for the Mercy Site here in St. Pete. We also had a chance to pass drug paraphernalia bills with both councils now pass County Commissioner, current County Commissioner Welch, and also Senator Ruson, documents showing that, and many others. There's been, there have been billions of dollars sent, brought back to this community for so many areas. I've enjoyed that. Also fought for folks like Marley Anderson when he experienced his death many years ago, fought and spoke out on that, as well as Tyrone Lewis, wasn't afraid to fight to make sure that we did right by his family when he was killed here, the hands of police officers here in St. Pete, fought for that. So in terms of funding, in terms of policy, in terms of the fight, I've done it all. And I'm looking forward to doing more. I think that now we need to talk about economic development, bringing more resources to our community, and making sure those resources are spread evenly throughout our communities because we're taxpaying citizens, so we should make sure money goes to every place it should go to and not just one area. And so I'm looking forward for that fight, taking it on and going forward in this commission race as a commissioner.
Ms. Flowers, it is currently your turn.
Thank you so very much. Really good question because there's so much. You can just kind of Google me and see some of the things that I've done. And it's been quite a lot, but I'll try to highlight just a few. When I became a city council member, we started with Challenge, Challenge Two Thousand and One, Challenge Two Thousand and Two. That was centering around the Business Development Center that was placed on the backside of then Bethel Community Church, which is now the home of my place of worship, Great Amounts I and AME. The Business Development Center, spearheaded by Teresa Jones and Mr. Ken Jones, no relation, was then set up to help serve as an incubator for small businesses and to provide microloans to small businesses in the amount of five hundred dollars to get them up and get them growing. We worked very closely with Mr. Welch, who was known sometimes as the mayor of South St. Petersburg, making sure that that business corridor was something that individuals would be able to traverse up and down while they were traveling to the Tampa Bay Rays stadium. I was very fortunate to work with Albieta Martin Berry on the Weed and Seed Program because drugs was taking over our community, and we still have some issues as it relates to drug use and abuse, and we're working through that. But the Weed and Seed Program was just that. It was looking at what needed to be assisted, finding the finances and the resources for it to allow it to help grow, and it's still in existence today. Working with the Community Development Block Grant Dollars, we were able to purchase a lot of properties to be able to assemble the property where now the Job Corps Center sits. A family member of mine owned a gas station right there on the corner, and so I know how important it was to the community to be able to do something that was very special. And what's really exciting about that Job Corps site is unlike other Job Corps sites, persons can come there from the community, all before you were sent wherever there was an opening. But one of the caveats that we requested through the community was that if community residents wanted to participate in the Job Corps Training Program, they could, and I'm very excited about that. When I got on council, the Summer Youth Employment Program had been started by Mr. Louis Philou. That's the person whose seat I took when I began to serve on city council. And he put in place a number of things, but one of his passions was the Summer Youth Employment Program. It was now funded at the rate that it should be funded. And every single year, I fought until we got that funding up to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Bowley became the lead agency for that program. Deborah Fix Sanders was hired as the executive director, and she worked so cohesively with corporate America to marry dollars so that corporate America would pay a percentage or all of a person's salary instead of the city paying all of it, and that way we were able to assist many more youth. Affordable housing, I started the Affordable Housing Investment Trust through the Florida League of Cities, and that entity is still operational today, working with over four hundred and eleven municipalities throughout the state of Florida. As the president of the Florida League of Cities, I oversaw a nine hundred and ninety-nine million investment trust with every single dollar accounted for. I began the Blue...
Thank you both for your responses. Our next question, the Woodson is currently neared by the historic Jordan Parks Senior Village, which has been fenced off now for more than two years. The county failed to fund the efforts of the St. Pete Housing Authority's plans to demolish the senior village. As a member of the County Commission, what action would you take to address the current decay of the historic village? You have three minutes, starting with Ms. Flowers.
Okay, so I hope I don't get muted by accident again on this time. But as it relates to the senior village, I was a part of the group that called the attention to what needed to be done. Seniors were living there where rats and rodents were crawling up through the piping. They had roach infestations. They had issues with the structural context of those thirty-one units. And so they should have been fixed, and they were not taken care of appropriately by the person who at that time was the director for the Housing Authority. I gathered, along with Terry Lipsy Scott, who led the charge, and many other individuals from the community to make sure that there was a spotlight placed on that issue, that we look at rehabilitating those units if they could be rehabilitated, and that we also looked at making sure that the residents that were living there were placed in safe, clean, and affordable housing. Having said all of that, I do know that the St. Petersburg Housing Authority have had a number of conversations. I've attended their Housing Authority Board meetings where they were attempting to put together financing in order to do some strong rehabilitation on those properties. Certain things have to be in place. You have to have a guarantee of financing. You have to know where you're going to get the additional matching dollars from. And so as time went on, it became quite difficult to put those pieces together. What would I do as a County Commissioner? I certainly will look at our housing funds to see if we could go ahead and supplant that for the Housing Authority. The county does have its own Housing Authority with their building located in North County, and they're getting ready right now to build an entire apartment complex strictly focused for seniors. I would love to see them marry that same financial relationship with the St. Petersburg Housing Authority because we're serving taxpayers throughout the county. I would also want to see us contact the Department of Housing and Urban Development out of Washington, DC. I know that it's been difficult to work with Mr. Carson, who is the Secretary for HUD, but that's where the dollars are placed. And there's a gentleman who used to live in this community, who wife used to work for Pinellas County Schools. And so I certainly will reach out to him since he works in that office with Mr. Carson to see what we can do to bring some dollars down to either rehabilitate those units and do what we need to do to get residents back in there. It was stated by the architect that those buildings are still sound. But I believe if we repair them and take care of the things that need to be taken care of, we will be able to see individuals move back into those thirty-one units and allow vibrancy to come back to Senior Village where it belongs.
Thank you, Ms. Flowers. We will now move on to Mr. Peterman.
Well, having served as a Pinellas County Housing Commissioner for six years or more years ago, certainly understand this entire issue and problem, if you will. I think the biggest thing I would do, and I think it's been well stated earlier, the problem and the issue has already been stated, and Ms. Flowers laid it out really well. I think what I would do is just make sure, once again, it was stated before, and that is to make sure we get funding from a federal resource, more funding there, as was stated earlier, and also our own housing dollars that we have at the county level. The biggest thing, though, being a County Commissioner, County Housing Commissioner years ago, I think the biggest thing I try to do is make sure that I heard from the residents, that I want to hear what they had to say. They have to live there. They're the ones that eat, you know, live and play and work in those areas each and every day. So I want to make sure I'm hearing what they have saying. As a Pinellas County Housing Commissioner years ago, that's what I did. And we had several locations throughout the entire county. And so having that experience and understanding what that looks like, I want to ensure that the funding gets to this location like it should, like I've done in the past, and also to make sure that the residents, the residents state what it is they want and what they need. It all starts with the people in those places, and then from there, we create the funding mechanisms and the funding possibilities from that. So I look forward to doing that. Wonderful people in all our entire community, and especially there. And so we'll work hard to make sure that funding gets there and that we'll take care of the physical needs we need to, the structures we need to in that particular place. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterman. Our next question is, what do you perceive to be your greatest challenge in serving on the Pinellas County Commission? You have three minutes. We will start with Mr. Peterman.
I'll be honest with you, a couple of things. One is affordable housing. The next is the transportation issue. Those two areas are extremely important. We got to have better affordable housing. I think that we have to marry and connect the affordable housing issues, connect the government with the private sector, and ask landlords to reconsider their rent requirement, and that we might incentivize them from the governmental side to have them do that. We have to make sure that people who are earning good dollars or at least decent wages, and sometimes not decent wages, could want to fight for fifteen-dollar-hour wage increase for sure, but that they have a place to stay. And the second thing I would say is mass transit. Got to make sure that we have rapid-moving vehicles in our county. And I think mass transit and light rail systems would help with that and make sure that there's accessibility to the various terminals in this county. Since we're not that far from where people live, they can get to a terminal, get on a mass transit system of some type, and get to jobs throughout the entire, or businesses throughout the entire county. And I think if I had to think of another area, it would be, once again, the economic development area, small businesses. Quite a bit of money was spent with businesses outside of our community over the years. We did not get to see those dollars. And I want to ensure that if money is going to be spent for businesses, that African-American businesses get what they need, just like any other part of this community. I've always fought like that, and I will continue to fight like that, to make sure that there's a connection between the two. And so those areas are very important to me, than many others, but those areas, those three areas, transit, economic development, and when we talk about, you know, affordable housing, those are the key, I believe, a key to, in terms of fighting for, when I get on the, when I become a County Commissioner in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Peterman. We will now hear from Ms. Flowers.
Thank you. One of the greatest areas of concern will certainly be wrapping my head around what the revenue and the budget will be. When we look at COVID-19 and the number of persons that are out of work, we look at the fact that the cost of gas has gone down, and while that is wonderful for those of us that are traveling right now, it's not generating the tax revenue that it would normally generate that we could utilize to invest in programs throughout the county. And so I know that there are going to be shortfalls. We've seen this before back in two thousand and five to two thousand and seven when we saw our housing market crash, and we looked at a reduction in services and a reduction in revenue throughout the county. And it was a very difficult time, and there are some businesses that are still reeling from that time. And so definitely wrapping my arms around the budget and how we will be able to assist the residents in our county the way that they need support. I think the other thing that I want to do is for us to address how we respond and react in a time of crisis. The pandemic has come upon us. No one asked for it. We didn't know it would come. Such a small bug, causing such great problems and disdain throughout our community. But one thing I believe it did do was it uncovered our unreadiness. And what I mean by that is whether or not we have enough PPE equipment for any type of pandemic that may come, whether or not we have enough staff to cover all the various nuances, whether it's policing for safety, whether it's backup nurses, whether it's providing PPE services even for the community, not just for our medical persons. So I think we'll need to address that and make sure that we are separating that from the day-to-day operations that the Department of Health would run here locally in our county. Transportation is huge, and while we received twenty-eight million dollars from the federal government for bus rapid transit that will take individuals from St. Petersburg to the beaches, across Pasco County, over to Tampa International Airport, over through downtown Tampa and out through Wesley Chapel, we need to extend that out into the Orlando area and even going further south into Broward County. Why do we need to do that? Persons need to be mobile for employment reasons. And we're going to have to adjust the way that we look at employment. We're going to have to look at how we are re-energizing small businesses. So it may be that you were a brewery before, but now you're going to make hand sanitizer. And so how do we provide the support and assistance to that business to make that transition? And so how do we provide the support and assistance to that business to make that transition so that then they can continue to hire people from the community? I think um we're also going to have to grapple with um our construction codes and permitting processes um in having conversations with uh Mr. Burton, with uh Mr. Barton, I'm sorry, with uh the Pinellas County Government um as well as other contractors. The uh time uh spent on having their plans reviewed, and then the time spent on um actually uh having inspections done are where, you know, it's most costly. And so we want to be able to reduce any types of fees or services that we can so that they can continue to operate uh in an effective, efficient manner um and thereby being able to hire more people from the community because they're able to generate more revenue.
Thank you both for your responses. Our next question. The county offers many services that are meant to improve access, like the mobile app, the fall prevention program for the elderly, and the small business enterprise program. What would you do to ensure that your constituents are well-informed on these matters? You have two minutes, starting with Ms. Mr. Peterman.
Well, I I think what I would do is expand uh the communication lines uh between the county and uh District Seven and and other positive county. I would like to possibly look at tourist tourism development dollars uh and see if we can possibly look at uh some resources that I will say to you, those dollars are really down because of COVID nineteen, people aren't traveling to to our county. Uh an area like that or uh another possible uh department. But I think there are ways to to communicate, since that's our our way of communicating to people in the county they are marketing on. I think there's a way to have maybe an offshoot if we can find more stimulus dollars, a couple of million dollars be placed in that particular uh area because they are marketing group and because, I don't know, they actually uh have a lot of things happening for African-Americans like they probably should, and that's that's no uh that's no uh hit on them at all. They've done wonderful work in terms of bringing people to our county. I just want to make sure that it's it's equitable, that that if there are dollars there and it and it, those dollars are taxpayers' dollars, tax uh taxpayers' dollars, then we want to make sure that uh we get uh areas communicated to us and programs communicated to us. And since that's already a kind of communication arm, and I know they have a communication department, I get that, but I mean a marketing arm, uh then I would like to uh develop that and infuse that area with with maybe more resources and make sure that we get uh more communication out about various uh new technology and other areas uh the county is actually uh promulgating and bringing forth in this time. So that's what I would do uh in terms of communicating to the district and throughout the county. I think we can utilize that uh tourist development council a little bit more once we get more money, stimulus money, other money infused into that area. I want to use that area as a marketing piece and communication piece for uh District Seven.
Thank you, Mr. Peterman. Next, Ms. Renee, you have two minutes to answer the question.
Um one of the things that I was very successful at was getting Pinellas County Schools to begin to have meetings out in the public and have them after five so that people who worked during the day would be able to attend those meetings. After all, when we are campaigning, we find it and we find the time to go out to the community and attend those events. And so we need to begin to expand and bring those meetings to the community so that they can see us face-to-face, we can hear exactly what it is that they're asking for, and they can participate more freely in our discussion. It's a little difficult for some people to travel up to uh Fort Harrison for those meetings. I would also like to um put out a newsletter that talks about news and views in District Seven, I've already named it. Um just hitting some of the highlights because persons may not have a chance to go back and hear what was discussed. Um I sat through on Tuesday of last week through the county commission meeting. It was very informative, and it was a lot of information. And so being able to put some of those highlights with contact numbers and things of that nature uh in the newsletter, I think would be absolutely wonderful. Having top town hall meetings and partnering with the other municipalities, something that myself, Commissioner Ken Welch, Lisa Willaboma from the city of St. Petersburg, we began to do things together. Um I started a how-to-do business with Pinellas County Schools. The two of them joined me, and so we brought in a county perspective and a city perspective. And we were very, very successful in that. And so making sure that people understand that the county government is not going to work against the municipality. We need to work together because we're working for the same constituents. And the last thing that I would like to do is just some different radio spots. We have a number of radio stations, ninety-nine jams, um uh the Beat uh Radio and others where we can go on and have a dialogue and discussion. And now that we're all becoming quite successful with Zoom and Teams and Google Meet, um I think utilizing this as a platform for social media to allow people to be able to come on, whether it's through their phone or through their computer, but to be able to have this dialogue has been absolutely wonderful, and I want to continue that. So I think that's one of uh several ways that we'll be able to communicate with the community and have the community communicate with us.
Thank you for answering that question. The next question is, last year, the commission spent more dollars than ever before on mental health, adding a collaborative behavioral health team. Yet, recent events have prompted cries to defund law enforcement and reform policy. Would you advocate for the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office budget? You have two ques- two minutes. We're beginning with Ms. Flowers.
Well, um the Pinellas County Sheriff's Budget is one of the largest chunks of money out of uh the commission's budget. And I do support funding social service programs adequately, funding for mental health, licensed mental health clinicians adequately, funding places like Directions for Mental Health and Suncoast Mental Health. So please understand when I say I'm not talking about defunding the police, what I am talking about is being able to pull those things away from the sheriff's office that they should not even be doing because they're not really licensed or experienced in those areas and providing those dollars to the entities who are experienced in those areas. And that way, the police are not going on those calls, spending another two hours booking that person in, which takes them off of their beat for two to three hours total before they can get back into whatever zone that they're coming from. The city of St. Petersburg just went through this. Instead of hiring the additional twenty-five-plus officers, they're taking those dollars and they're putting them into the crisis, a crisis team. And I believe that's the way to go because there are certain instances where if the police come, it will heighten the situation. And it's a medical issue. Um it could be someone with a substance abuse problem, but it's certainly not something that rises to the level of um arresting them, having them um, you know, be remanded into jail, can't bond out, and so they're going to be there for a period of time until they can get their first appearance or they uh are released on their own recognizance. And so um I would love to look at how that budget is structured. Um it is one of the largest budgets um component pieces uh when you look at the county's budget and you look at the unincorporated areas of the county as well as those service areas where the sheriff has been contracted through different municipalities to provide the service. I think we begin to see um some focus and direction on where those dollars are spent, and I think that's just smart, and it certainly is prudent, and it's something that I believe we will see change, the dynamics and relationships between police officers and the community.
Thank you, Mrs. Flowers. Mr. Peterman, you have two minutes to answer the same as that question.
Yeah, I think it's very important to right-size, if you will, certain parts of the sheriff's budget. And what I mean by it is, we certainly want to make sure the sheriff's department is still functioning uh throughout the county. However, I think we need resources to go in the mental health areas and other areas. And I believe that we should create, I've said in another Zoom meeting, you know, hub hub zone points. We have a lot of folks, or quite a few folks who have mental illness issues, and many of them are hu- homeless folks. Not all of them, but uh many of them are homeless. And I think we ought to find areas in three zones, north, central, and south, where we have people who are professionals uh in the mental health area to go and make sure these people through some form of transportation are getting to these facilities. And that's going to mean extra funding. And I believe that they get more funding from federal government. We also need to fund, like, get every resource we have at the county level and also state, state government. And I know how to get that done. And so I think it's important to do that, to show compassion with folks who have mental health, even folks who who aren't homeless who have mental health issues. Uh want to make sure that we have safe places for them to go. Years ago, they defunded mental health quite a bit. And so uh sheriff's departments and police uh units and uh stations uh shouldn't shouldn't be tasked without with the uh uh, I guess, a problem of making sure that folks who are having mental issues uh that they should be the ones to go in and take care of that. There should be people who who know what they're doing to go in and do that. And I think we should have funding in possibly three areas throughout the county where we can make sure that this is taken care of. And also to make sure that everyone who has mental health issues, black and white, brown, yellow, whatever, that they're treated, that they're treated the same. They're treated, we've seen what some African-American men and others have been killed uh because they were misdiagnosed, yeah, and uh they were shot and killed at the hands of police officers and sheriff's deputies because of it. So we got to make sure there's good training that other folks get involved.
Thank you, Mr. Peterman. Our next question. COVID nineteen is not going away anytime soon. The recent uptick in South St. Pete is particularly alarming. Have you given any thought as to how the commission can better meet the needs of the community and what the county can do to provide more assistance? You both have two minutes, starting with Mr. Peterman.
Yeah, I think it's really important to get the most accurate information uh that's coming out of CDC uh in Atlanta and 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 other places uh throughout throughout the country. Uh they seem to have cutting edge information as well as our county representatives uh and come up with a game plan uh that looks at handling the uptick. Uh we know there are issues happening in the county right now, and we got to speak to those issues as relates to COVID nineteen. I'm not so sure that we shouldn't possibly looking at uh creating uh temporary facilities. Uh in the event that we outstrip the capacity to put people in our uh hospital beds. Uh I think uh New York and and Governor Cuomo did that. And so we might have to look at some temporary uh possible units uh to make sure that we, if if we have to handle an overload of of patients, that we're able to do it. And so sometimes you'll think outside the box, and I think it's time to start thinking outside the box. Also, the communication piece, I think, has been going really well for the most part from the county. They've been on it. We gave out thousands of masks over the last uh couple of weeks to people in our community from the church our pastor. Uh we gave out hundreds, um actually thousands of masks, maybe fifteen hundred, I should say, uh at that location and other locations, trying to make sure that people are safe. And uh we enjoy doing that. And so I think the county's done a pretty decent job of getting uh this kind of information out, but we need to communicate more about wearing masks and keeping the social distance uh distancing piece in place. Also, I think we got to get more information from some of the areas outside of our community uh and come up with better plans to take on COVID nineteen.
Thank you, Mr. Peterman. We will now hear from Ms. Flowers.
Well, first of all, I want to say thank you so much to Commissioner Ken Welch and to Deborah Fix Sanders uh in the city of St. Petersburg, as well as the full county commission um for providing the uh five uh uh washable masks in packages that allow for the distribution of about fifteen thousand masks over a three-day period of time to persons in our community. Um and so I believe that's going a long way um to help individuals realize and understand just how uh critical we are when it comes to social distancing, when it comes to wearing your mask, when it comes to uh hand washing uh and making sure that we are protecting ourselves as well as protecting others. I would love to see the county look at ways that maybe we can um increase some of the funding for contact tracing. Um we have seen a a number of persons who may in fact uh be um receptive to the disease. They are carriers, but they are not experiencing uh any symptoms. And so they're going home and they are uh causing others within their homes to be infected with the pandemic. Um and once it hits the home, um it's going to basically affect everyone that's in there. I don't believe there's not one of us that's on this call that uh at this point don't know someone personally who has uh contracted the virus and are experiencing some horrible uh side effects and symptoms. So I would love to see us uh step up some of the contact tracing because it is very apparent that the uh governor of this state is not going to do that. I would also like for us to partner with the University of South Florida's Medical School, as well as the University of Central Florida that has a wonderful medical school now. Um the Rem- Remdivir, which is the medication that um is a trial test right now, um is in short supply. And while um I want to thank Congressman Chris uh and others on the federal level for assuring that the drug is here, as well as Cuomo from the state of New York, I believe that we could probably speed up production of that medication, that trial medication, if we incorporate those to very prestigious uh universities. Um and then we just need to continue with the mass distribution, Pinellas County Schools. We've ordered over five hundred thousand masks, um but we need to continue with that. Thank you.
Thank you for both of your responses. Continuing with the program, the following questions have been created exclusively for each candidate. You will have two minutes to respond.
The first question is for Mr. Peterman. Mr. Peterman, you were cited by the Florida Ethics Committee for excessive use of travel funds. What have you done since that time to earn back the trust of the public?
Well, first of all, you know, I don't, I hope this doesn't sound um, this doesn't sound like I'm speaking of something in a, speaking of a group in a, in a derogatory way, because I'm not. But I got to say to you, I'm really su- really surprised that all the groups I've spoken to, it's the first group that did this. And uh really didn't expect it from this group. But having said that, um uh I paid whatever I had to pay. And by the way, this was something that uh was actually allowed. It was nothing that was illegal, nothing. There was no uh sentencing, any of that. Uh this is something that was allowed by many secretaries. I was singled out as a person that uh they sought to to go out at that time. You got to understand, when African-Americans uh hold very large uh positions uh in most governmental places, you you name it, uh there are times, I'm talking about on a level where you have a statewide responsibility or nationwide responsibility, sometimes you take hits, especially when you're trying to do something right for kids and their families throughout this state of Florida. Uh and so uh no, there were no repercussions. I'd like to say this, too. Many people in this community asked me to run uh for many positions, even after that that took place. They know my my track record. I've served this community for many years, and many of them didn't pay much attention to it at all. And as a matter of fact, they kept asking me to run year after year. Want to make sure I finish raising my kids and make sure they got to college and high school. So uh there there's, you know, I'm I'm very excited about what God has done. Uh God is uh taking things further uh in my family and other places. But um everything's working out very well, and we we're ready to win this race, even with with a question like that. Once again, I love this organization, wonderful organization, but I'm I'm a little surprised.
Thank you, Mr. Peterman. The next question is for Mrs. Renee Flowers. Ms. Flowers, you ran in one with the majority plurality to your school board seat. Explain why you have made the decision to vacate your seat and run for a position on the county commission.
Thank you for asking me that question, um because I had it uh posed to me uh the other day on a radio show I did with Mr. Matt Byrd. I'll try to give you the short version. Um I ran for a school board because I was asked to run after Mr. Lou Williams passed away. I managed his campaign efforts, that was something that he wanted to do. Um he was successful, um and he was doing a wonderful job, and he passed away very unexpectedly. I spoke to um a few people in the community and said to them, because I had started my own business, to manage candidates, and I said, if you find me somebody to run, I will run their campaign for free. And that group of individuals said, we were really thinking you would do it. Um I told them that I I wasn't sure because uh I was helping some other African-American candidates. I wanted to get them through, um and I didn't want to disappoint people. Um and it wasn't until after I spoke to Ms. Athareen, uh his widow, uh my friend, and got her blessing that I ran, and I ran with the promise that I would finish his bucket list, all of the things he had on his list, and I knew what they were because I managed his campaign, that I would finish those. Not only did I finish those, we exceeded it and then moved on to some other things that I have been very successful in. Sixty-eight million dollars in bonds to build a brand-new Melrose Elementary School, a rehab, Lakewood, uh and certainly thirty-six million uh to redo St. Petersburg High School. Um I wanted to run for county commission, and I was not aware of what date or time that would happen. Uh but Commissioner Ken Welch decided that he was not going to run for his position anymore, that he would uh seek a higher office, which uh he's going to be running for mayor. And it unfortunately came at a time after I just won my school board seat. And so it was either run now or wait and run four years from now. I chose to run now because it allows for persons to be able to run for my seat rather than have the governor that we have appoint someone to that seat. So um I'm running for uh So I'm running for a seat that I ran for before in two thousand and eight. I wasn't successful, but a number of you on this call supported me. I look forward to being successful. I look forward to continuing as your next county commissioner.
Thank you, Mrs. Flowers. We would like to thank each of our candidates for their participation this evening and for allowing us to hear their views regarding matters of interest to our community. We have one question that Dana was going to ask from the chat.
Regarding public transporters. Regarding public transportation, what are your thoughts on adding more buses to serve riders more frequently? We can start with Mr. Peterman.
Well, I would certainly hope that we get more funding for public transportation. I'd like for it to have more terminals. I think the biggest thing that I'm hearing from time to time is to make sure that terminals are very accessible to, for people living in our community. That they get close to, they live close to, be able to get to those terminals that are close to where they where they live. And so I want to make sure that's that's that that happens. I also would like to see not only us develop the busing piece, that we have more buses, more people driving buses, more people actually, you know, being on buses. But once again, I want to go back to the the transit piece, the mass transit piece and getting people places quickly. A lot of speed and deliver, good delivery in a safe way. I think that's extremely important. So bus, the busing piece, definitely want to make sure we have more buses. I think that it's more funding for that. I think there are resources that we ought to go out and I think we ought to become the kind of commission that looks at resources outside of what we have even there at the county level. But I think the key question along with bus, the bus, the buses and people actually traveling on buses is mass transit. We just got to get our arms around that in this county and beyond. And it's it's high time for us, we had a governor some, some years ago, Governor Scott, you know, you know, Senator Scott, who turned down millions of dollars that should have come to this state and would have connected us to many other places throughout the state of Florida. And so I could have good leadership in this particular seat and make sure, and I think both of us are good candidates, by the way, make sure that we have the right kinds of funding as it relates to not only the bus seat, bus piece, but also once again, mass transit and light rail. I think those things are, this is what our future should look like, bus, buses, as well as mass transit areas.
Thank you, Mr. Peterman. We will now hear from Ms. Flowers.
Thank you. I had a chance to serve on PSTA for five years and the bus roundabout that you see on Central Avenue is as a result of my advocacy, making sure that people had dignity, even though they were riding on public transportation. And when you go up north, that's what people do. They use public transportation, taking vehicles off the road and helping to reduce our carbon footprint. I believe we can expand the buses that we have that are driving on compressed natural gas as well as electric. I think that the twenty eight million dollars that we've received to help expand bus rapid transit will certainly go a long way to expanding the service deliverables because persons will catch the bus if it will get them to work on time. If it will allow them to move quickly, effectively and efficiently through our county. But because we are so close to you and because Thirty Fourth Street can be a monster, I mean, Lullin Booth Road can be a monster. Driving down Fort Harrison can be a monster. We need to have those expedited lanes like what you see in Orlando so that those buses are moving straight through and they're not having to stop through traffic. I think once we begin to build up ridership, we'll be able to reduce the cost of fares. The light rail that runs in South Florida from Fort Lauderdale going down to Broward is only two dollars and fifty cents. And so for five dollars, less than what you would spend in gas, you can move rapidly from one end of the area to the other, going to work, going to shop, going out to dinner and come back. And it runs all through the day and night. And so because we are becoming a more metropolitan community, we're going to need to start to look at things like that. And I certainly support utilizing mass transit, putting more buses that are clean energy buses on the streets, taking cars off the street and thereby reducing our carbon footprint.
Thank you, Ms. Flowers. At this time, we will afford each candidate an opportunity to provide a closing statement. You will have two minutes. We will start with Mr. Peterman.
Well, once again, I want to thank Woodson for inviting me to be on this call. And also the other candidate was Flowers. They have done wonderful work in this community over the years and certainly have been a part of that on one level or the other. It's by bringing forth a side note here, just like to say, when this group got going, a wonderful opportunity to actually accept my position as secretary for the Department of Juvenile Justice on the steps of the woods with Congressman, well, now Congressman Charlie Chris, Governor Chris at the time. So I have a connection here, my very inception as a secretary for the Department of Juvenile Justice on your, on those steps. So I want to always be forever connected. Once again, I thank God that you recognize the work that I've done in the past. Also, even families, my father being on the outside on the marquee there, the other attorneys, Black Trans, who fought for the courageous twelve police officers, as well as the garbage striking workers years ago. And so it's been a long history for me. I've enjoyed the work, will continue to fight and enjoy this particular kind of community work. Want to fight for social justice, fight against systemic racism and institutionalized racism in this community and beyond. Also affordable housing and community budget requests and we expand that as well as other areas, including economic development and working on bolstering small businesses. Thank you very much. Vote for Frank Peterman on August eighteen.
Thank you. Now we will hear from Ms. Flowers.
Thank you so very much. Thank you to Mr. Daniel Sanders and certainly thank you to Ms. Lauren Latimer for being such wonderful moderators and for showing our community what it's like to grow up in Pinellas County and what you can be making your own footprint. And thank you so very much, Marielle Summers and to Terry Lipsy Scott and the others that are on the call. You know, being a county commissioner means that you need to be able to work with twenty seven different municipalities as well as the unincorporated areas of the community. And I think I've been able to show that, not just as president of the Florida League of Cities, but also as one of the largest employees through Pinellas County Schools, serving every single inch of our county. I know that from the things that I've been able to put forth and supporting other municipalities. It's why I have the endorsement of Mayor Sam Henderson from Gulfport, working on infrastructure improvements along Forty Ninth Street. That's also why I have the support and endorsement of Representative Jennifer Webb, because we've worked together on making sure that children can eat healthy meals. Working with a former House of Representative member Carl Zimmerman, when we're talking about what we're doing for the environment and what we're doing for our lakes and our rivers and our streams and our parks all throughout Pinellas County. I also would like to state that Jordan Park is near and dear to me. I grew up there, that's where I lived and homeownership was something that my parents instilled in all of us. I'm the baby of twelve and it was by no mistake and by no happenstance that I had a chance to live in Jordan Park, I had a chance to move out of Jordan Park and a chance to purchase my own home and raise my family. I want to continue to serve. I've served for well over sixteen years and I can assure you that a day or night won't go by that I won't have you at the forefront of everything that I do. Vote for Renee Flowers by mail. You can vote early, August eighth through the sixteenth, or make sure you vote in person for You Know Renee on August eighteen. Thank you.
Thank you both for your closing remarks. At this time, we will have the executive director of the Dr. Carter G. Woodson African American Museum, Terry Lipsy Scott, with her final closing remarks.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you so much for joining us. It was indeed our pleasure to host these two extraordinary candidates, two of whom I know personally and certainly wish them well in their bid and their candidacy. Here at the Carter G. Woodson African American Museum, it's extremely important to us to not only be a place where we preserve, present, interpret African American history, but also a place where we in fact encourage voter participation. It is indeed voter participation that's made the difference and made our history. So we are hopeful that we can engage our community to be a part of this extremely important time in our history. Tomorrow evening, we will be hosting candidates for a circuit judge as well as House District Seventy. We're hopeful that you will join us again. This evening, we were proud to have with us two extraordinary individuals whom we are proud to call Woodson warriors. These two exceptional individuals are in fact those who we have awarded and reawarded scholarships this year. And we are delighted that they've been with us. We can't thank you enough, Danielle, as well as Lauren, for your wonderful support, participation and delivery of this forum this evening. Thank you so very much. To our office manager, Marielle, you have once again pulled this all together beautifully. We want you to be mindful of those who are here tonight, those who took time from their busy schedules to in fact engage a broader audience. And we also want you to be mindful of who was not here tonight. We are hopeful that the representation and presentation of the individuals who are here this night have spoke to your hearts and that when you cast a ballot, you will bear in mind those who have you in mind. Thank you so much for joining us. And one last commercial, on Thursday, we will be hosting Come Dance With Us. Help us register voters and we'll be dancing virtually and we want you to dance like no one's watching. That evening, we will have available and on tap Kaylee Scales of Black Lives Matter, Angela Stribling, the radio host for WHUR, DJ Beverly Bond from Black Girls Rock. We're going to have a phenomenal time and mustering up the energy we need to encourage others to be a part of this extremely voting, extremely important voting process. Thank you all so very much for joining us tonight. We hope you have a wonderful evening and we look forward to seeing you again tomorrow. Have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you.